Welcome to the regular city council meeting for Tuesday evening, December 27th. Please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please silence your phones. Councilor Beauregard.
Yes. I have two citations here, recognition for...
Why don't you step right to the rostrum?
She gets her own music.
Hello. We get the chance to recognize remarkable individuals that make up the community. My colleague and I, Tom Monahan from WART2. Earlier this year, we were asked to speak, represent, because they were doing, how would I say it, analysis of gateway cities under the Obama administration. They asked us to speak a little bit about, answer some questions, give our opinions and feelings, beliefs and values, whatever about the city of Brockton. The reason we were selected is because it was focused on the revitalization of downtown. And we spoke about many things, the history, background, the community itself, and the people that put a whole lot in it. But the biggest thing we focused on, really, was the future, and the students, and what they do, and how remarkable our school system is. And we have two individuals tonight that demonstrate that. And want to highlight that they participated in a program called ACT-So that includes academics, and science, and history, and technology, and art. And they were with the Greater Brockton NAACP, and they were won statewide. So they represented the city in Cincinnati, Ohio, this summer, in July. And, well, they're here tonight, and I just wanted to realize for them that, you know, we appreciate how well they represented our community, and in the Midwest, and throughout the state, and their future. And we also want to thank the people that help out in getting these young people to be involved in all this. They're all volunteers, want to clear that up tonight. I know some family members are here, but want to highlight some people standing back there. Phyllis Ellis from the NAACP, she's one of the vice presidents, and Janet Trask is on the board of the NAACP. And Pat and Ken are here tonight, and they run this incredible science program through the schools and the Brockton Public Library System. And these individuals here tonight, I have Jalen, Cyril, Jalen, yes. And her parents are also here tonight, and I want to recognize her, if she'd come up here and receive this. And it says, "It's official citation was be it known that the Brockton City Council hereby extends its congratulations, and in recognition for you representing the Greater Brockton NAACP in 2016, the national championship in Cincinnati, Ohio. And be it further known that the City Council extends its best wishes for continued success," which I don't doubt here, "that this citation be duly signed by the President of City Council," which you see here tonight, ma'am, Mr. Cruz, "and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of City Council," which is this gentleman over here, Mr. Anthony Ziole. And I want to, you know, thank you for not only doing what you've done, practicing, rehearsing, and all the remarkable stuff that you've put together, but representing our city and the future of this community, and being such a positive part of it. And I'm sure your parents are really, you know, proud of you this evening, and they should be, so congratulations. And we also have one here for Brendan Van Veen, which I wanted him to come up here. And this, again, demonstration of these young people that get out there, and again, it said, you know, "in recognition for representing the Greater Brockton NAACP ACT-So national championship." And again, it says the same about representing this community. And I had a pleasure of seeing him perform at a fundraiser for ACT-So, which I hope will become an annual, because we had a really great time. But not only that, it allowed people to see, you know, the talent and the future that people like Brendan bring to the community. So again, congratulations.
Thank you, Councilor, and congratulations to both of you. Thank you for the great work you've done. Mr. Clerk, item number one.
We have acceptance of the minutes of the December 12, 2016, City Council meeting.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have the petition of 867 Pearl Street LLC, Todd Copeland Jr., for garage license located at 955 Pearl Street, Brockton, N.C. Clerk's Office, December 6, 2016. Hearing assigned for December 27, 2016.
Time having arrived, I declare the hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? If so, please step to the rostrum and state your name for the clerk.
How you doing? Jason Pappas, I'm the general manager of Copeland Chevrolet, in favor.
Thank you. Any questions, Councilors? Councilor Ian Eary.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Jason, how are you?
All right, good.
Good. And I know this is just a routine, because with every new dealership, you get the Class I license, and you also get your license that allows you to do the sale of pre-owned vehicles as well. So, that being said, I just want to pass on, if you would, to Todd. I know Todd couldn't be here this evening, Todd Copeland, but I just want to thank him and you, of course, for all that you're doing within the city, and the investment that he's placed into the city of Brockton now with another new dealership up on Pearl Street, which will be opening, I think you and I just talked about sometime in mid-January to at least, or mid-February anyways. And then you'd be departing from your Main Street location, where you've been at the old DeSantis building. And as well as, you still have, you know, the Copeland Toyota, and some people probably aren't aware of the fact that they own the property across the street, is what was once Candy World as well. And hopefully, at some point, that's going to be progressed into something. But just an outright thank you, and I want him to know that, that the city thanks him for keeping his investment right here in the city of Brockton. It really, really does mean a lot, so good job and keep up the good work. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Barnes.
Thank you. I think maybe through the chair to the chairman of the public safety. Would this be another petition that would come before public safety, before being voted on today?
No, this one would not. I don't believe it would be.
Don't believe this is... Actually, if you could, maybe you could let the council know, what is the full project here that's going on, public?
We're moving our 1555 Main Street location, Copeland Chevrolet, to 955 Pearl Street, right off Route 24 in Brockton. Ground-up facility with service and repair, and obviously, new and pre-owned vehicle sales.
Mr. President, if I could, through you.
Councilor.
Very similar to Bernati, with Mr. McGovern coming here, it was a simple change. That was just a change of ownership. This is just a change from one location to another location within the confines of the city. So as to chair, I wouldn't request this to go back to public safety.
Okay, so it's different than the other ones that we've been reviewing for the same verbiage?
Those are motor vehicle repair licenses?
No, there's one here for garage. I'm looking at the one we just did last week.
This is through the chair. This is a garage license. This is not a motor vehicle repair license. We have on file here, I don't know what you're holding up here, Councilor.
This is the agenda for public safety, and petition number four, actually, we're going to be hearing it today, petition for Fong Tat and Derek Tat for a garage license located at 772 North Main Street, Brockton, Mass. It just says the same thing, it's just a different business and location as this, and the rest of these were referred to public safety, so I just don't know why this...
Well, I think those garage licenses that you're referring to right now have also applied for motor vehicle or body repair licenses as well. And that's, I believe that's why they're in public safety. This is a garage license, the fire department has no objections to it. The scale for parking vehicles in and out of the garage is here. They have all the necessary paperwork.
Those were all motor vehicle repair, actually, that's number 18, is a motor vehicle repair license, along with a garage license, but the garage license didn't really need to go to public safety.
Okay, but it did, and that's kind of why I'm just asking, why isn't it a uniform practice?
Here again, Council, this is a Class I license, all right, which is different from the motor vehicle repair licenses. This is a new car dealership, altogether different than those garages that you're talking about.
You can certainly make a motion, too, if you have the votes on that.
I would like to make a motion to have this particular item go to public safety.
Mr. President, again, by all means, Council can do that. I won't be serving as the chair of public safety, there'll be a new chair at that time.
Correct. Motion made, I don't hear a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
On the motion.
On the motion.
Excuse me.
It's a public hearing, you can stay seated, Councilor.
I do understand my colleague's question, because we have to be uniform and consistent and treat everyone fairly, and we don't want to make it appear as though certain people don't have to follow the same steps. But in this case, unlike the other applicants that were referred to public safety, this is an existing business, which is simply moving to another location. The other people who came in were brand-new businesses who had never been licensed, and that's why we needed their hours of operation and their sufficient parking, et cetera, et cetera. Excuse me. If this were a brand-new business that had never been licensed, and they weren't moving from point A to point B, I would wholeheartedly say that you are correct, it should go to public safety for a full vetting. But where it is, as the outgoing chairman said, just a change in location, I think that's what makes a difference, if that helps my colleague.
No, I completely understand, and I thank you, but again, through the chair, I think that this one actually probably should be sent to public safety first and foremost, as they are moving, because there are going to be differences in the size of the land, the parking requirement, all of those things I think need to be reviewed, as we've done for other smaller businesses. I'm just trying to be uniform, and I mean, it's gone well so far, and again, to your point, I don't want it to look like there's any kind of favoritism for any particular business for any real reason. And if it's just, you know, kind of an exercise, you know, situation, I wouldn't think that Copeland would have a problem with that.
Well, there is time, and actually, your motion is not to be acted on yet, because we, the hearing's still open, so...
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
If I may, I'd like to still clear a point up here. This is a new car dealership. This is a license that requires the council to issue them the number of vehicles that they will park in their garage every night. Has nothing to do with repairs whatsoever.
And I understand that, Mr. Clerk.
And it's a new car dealership.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, just last week, we did the same thing for a car dealership. This is what this Mr. Tat was there for as well.
Used cars, different.
It's a Class II license.
Used cars, so there will be no used cars on this?
That doesn't come through us.
And there are no stipulations for the amount of cars you can have at this new location?
It does not, a new car dealership generally does not come to the council, other than for the garage license.
Okay, I'm still gonna...
Other than that, it's handled through the License Commission.
I'm still gonna hold to the motion when it comes, if it gets voted down.
If you desire to go to a public safety, it's, you know, it's your call, but I'm just trying to clear up what we're dealing with here.
The License Commission already approved the move of the Class I license, we were at that hearing just a couple of weeks ago. So we have the letter from the License Board stating that the Class I license is approved to be moved. So, and I believe after we get our garage license, then we come back and apply for an MVR, after the fact. This is just a garage license. We already hold an MVR at our current location. This is garage, and then, once we get the garage license, we come back and apply for an MVR license. You can't apply for them at the same time if you're not ready to move. So, we're just here for the garage license at the moment.
Correct.
I understand, I just think it bodes well for the council to show uniformity in how we behave with all businesses in the city.
I understand.
And again, just to shun the very appearance of any kind of favoritism, just my opinion. But thank you, Councilors, and thank you, sir.
Just one point, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, Councilor, anybody else have any questions? Councilor Ian Eary.
Just one point, because I don't like the comment that we're showing favoritism, because we are not. And I think that some councils need to sit down with the city clerk, and to also sit down at the License Commissioners, or with one of them, and figure out just, so they understand Class I from Class II, and what it all details, because the city clerk is correct, it's a Class I license. It's a brand-new building facility, no different than when Bernati came into the city six, seven years ago, no different than when Copeland opened up on West Chestnut Street and moved from their little spot on Main Street to West Chestnut Street, no different than what they're doing here this evening, and taking this location and moving it from Main Street to West Chestnut Street. We're missing the point, and I don't want to say, and I don't want to hear the word favoritism, because we're not doing that. It's a brand-new business with many more thousand dollars being spent, and I'm not trying to be rude, than the other businesses that go before public safety. Those are small businesses. Understand the word "small" to large. This is a large business, so, I mean, I'm not going to vote for it to go to public safety, because I don't think it needs to go there, and I don't want to do anything that's going to hold up a business of that size or magnitude for this city. I don't think we should be doing that, so that's where I lie with it. But I think councils need to understand Class I to Class II, and what comes with it, and then what happens afterwards, when you're selling just pre-owned vehicles, thousand-dollar vehicles to nine-thousand-dollar vehicles, stop. Somebody needs to understand that. Thank you.
Councilor, anyone else here in favor? Seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Is there anyone here in opposition? If so, please step forward and state your name for the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. We now have a motion on the table to refer to public safety. All those in favor? All those opposed? The question now comes on granting the license. All those in favor? All those opposed? License is granted. Thank you, sir. Item number three.
Report of the Public Safety Committee for its meeting of December 19, 2016.
Accepted and placed on file.
For the Finance Committee for its meeting of December 19, 2016.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Executive Director of Peric submitting the amount to be appropriated for the Brockton Retirement System for fiscal 2018, which commences July 1, 2017.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Assistant City Auditor certifying the balance of the sale of the Montello Pool Fund is $18,808.
Accepted and placed on file.
Application from the Superintendent of the Parks and Recreation Department requesting a transfer of $18,808 from the sale of the Montello Pool Account to the Park Department Enterprise Account, Park Improvement, and accordance to the City Council order of October 27, 1997, Section 3, these funds will be used for capital improvements to parkland.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Application from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file. Councilors, while the clerk is getting ready, I just want to let you know, Councilor Stedenski contacted me, he is home ill this evening. Send his regards. Councilor Sullivan.
President, like I did before, I want to make a motion, first of all, to take collectively Agenda Items 10, 11, 12, 13.
Second.
Form of a motion.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded.
And then, after they're read, I'm going to ask and make a motion to send them back to public safety, due to the fact that we still are waiting for the proper documentation that was requested probably eight weeks ago.
Motion made, seconded, take items 10 through 13 collectively, and to refer them back to public safety. Mr. Clerk, please read the orders.
Okay. Petition of Solid Auto Care Corp. for motor vehicle repair mechanical license located at 967 Montello Street, Unit A and B, Brockton, the City Clerk's Office. J&amp;B Auto Repair and Frab Works for Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License located at 967 Montello Street, Units C and D, Brockton. Petition of Bernado and Rowan Auto Repair Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License located at 967 Montello Street, Unit E, Brockton. Petition of the Rowan Automotive for Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License located at 967 Montello Street, Unit F, Brockton, these were in City Clerk's Office, June 16, 2016. The hearings were assigned for September 26, 2016. And Council, September 26, Councilor Farrell, motion to refer to public safety, properly seconded, the motion carried by a hand vote, November 2, 2016. There was stipulation, hours of operations, and they were recommended to be returned to the, excuse me, Public Safety Committee.
Motion made and seconded to refer these back to public safety. All those in favor? All those opposed? Refer to public safety.
An appropriation of $73,037.87 from the unappropriate accident receipts, General Fund, fiscal 2017, fiscal 2016 court judgments, $62,904.30 Roof Repair Fund, $4309, $632.46, Fiscal 50, 911 Grant Fund, $3306, $3,381.43 Fiscal 2013, 911 Grant Fund, $3278, $6,119.68. In order to eliminate various funds or appropriation deficits, and Council, November 14, 2016, ready to refer to the Finance Committee. And Council, November 28, 2016, Council Rodriguez motion to postpone next City Council meeting, properly seconded. And Council, December 12, 2016, Council Barnes motion to postpone the next City Council meeting, properly seconded, motion carried by a hand vote. The recommendation in those committees were favorable.
Councilor Rodriguez.
Mr. Chairman, I had made the original request when this item first came on, to get a list of settlements and court judgments for or against the city, and to date, we still have not received those lists. And that being said, what I'd like to do is refer this back to Finance, but at the same time, put a strong word in there, that we're not really playing games with this thing anymore. I mean, we're council members, we come to these meetings when we need to, and when we make requests, we're not doing it for our looks, or the way we feel, and the way we sound. So I think we need to somehow make it, you know, send a strong message to these departments that when these requests are made, they're made seriously on behalf of the citizens of this city. So for that, I'm going to make a motion that we refer this back to Finance Committee.
Motion made and seconded, refer back to Finance. All those in favor? All those opposed? Refer back to Finance.
We have the petition of Rob Jewlers for a secondhand articles license, and a precious better license, in Council, November 14, 2016, refer to Committee on Finance, that report was unfavorable.
Councilor Monahan.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to send this back to public safety.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, send this back to public safety. All those in favor? All those opposed? Refer to public safety.
Petition of Gary Thompson, DBA, Automotive Repairs Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License located at 287 North Montello Street, Unit 3, Brockton, City Clerk's Office, October 14, 2016. Hearing assigned for November 14, 2016. And Council, November 14, recommendation was favorable. And a parking plan was submitted, 11/28/16. And Council, November 28, 2016, hearing held, granted by a hand vote. Councilor Farrell motion for reconsideration, with a wish that it does repair, and was properly seconded, motion carried by a hand vote. Farrell motion to send to public safety, properly seconded, motion carried by a hand vote.
Questions on granting. All those in favor? All those opposed? License is granted. Item number 17.
Petition of M. Style Motorsports for Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License located at 287 North Montello Street, Units 5 and 6, and Clerk's Office, September 6, 2016. Hearing assigned for November 14, 2016. And City Council, November 14, 2016, Council Farrell motion to send to public safety, properly seconded, motion carried by a hand vote. Recommendation was favorable.
Questions on granting. All those in favor? All those opposed? License is granted. Item 18.
Petition of Fong Tat and Derek Tat for a garage license located 772 North Main Street, Brockton, and Clerk's Office, October 6, 2016. Hearing assigned for November 14, 2016, at 8:00 p.m. And Council, November 14, 2016, Council Farrell motion to send, public safety properly seconded, motion carried by a hand vote. Recommendation is favorable.
Questions on granting. All those in favor? All those opposed? License is granted. Item number 19.
Tat and Derek Tat, Champion Auto Glass for Motor Vehicle Repair License at 772 North Main Street, Clerk's Office, October 6, 2016. Hearing assigned for November 14, 2016, at 8:00 p.m. And Council, November 14, 2016, Council Farrell motion to send to public safety, properly seconded, motion carried by a hand vote. Recommendation of that committee was favorable.
Councilor Farrell.
Mr. President, just a housekeeping matter. When the applicants were here, they indicated that that should read Champion Auto Group instead of Champion Auto Glass, and I would ask, does that take a motion, or can we make an administrative change?
The Clerk's Office will just note that on the license.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Council Sullivan.
In addition to Agenda Item 18, as well as the current one, 19, when Mr. Tat appeared before public safety, it was Fong Tat, and he made it clear to us, along with the business name correction, that Derek Tat, his brother, is not involved in the business in any capacity. So we just wanted to make sure that that's noted as such.
Will we all settle on that? All set? Thank you. Those will be noted. Questions on granting. All those in favor? All those opposed? License is granted. Item number 20.
Order that the name of Kane Street also be known as McAllister Way, and Council, December 12, 2016, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance, that report is favorable as amended.
Question is on the amendment, which, as you recall, was to add Wayne E. into the name. All those in favor of the amendment? All those opposed? The amendment carries. Question is now on adoption by roll call vote. Will Clerk please call a roll?
Yes.
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 The order is adopted.
Order, the Executive Office for Energy and Environmental Affairs is offering reimbursable grants to cities and towns to support preservation and restoration of urban parks through the parkland acquisition and renovations for communities grant program, 301 CMR-5. And the city of Brockton is eligible for $400,000 in grant funding, and the Brockton Redevelopment Authority has allocated $120,000 in community development block grant funds, which is the Walker Playground. And City Council, December 12, 2016, refer to Standing Committee on Finance, that report is favorable as amended.
Mr. President.
Councilor Ian Eary.
If I might, Mr. President, at this point, I'd like to move and make a motion that this be sent back to the Finance Committee, and indicate to you that I have some great concerns with what is here before us. Still have some concerns to even how healthy our vote was at our last meeting, when we had it in Finance, in regards to this whole issue. And I'm also hearing that, you know, there's some final documents already in place with this $400,000 that's already been received, and that gives me great concern to, you know, we're voting on something this evening that says an amendment, but, you know, how do they know what our feeling was in regards to this whole situation? So I'd like to move and make a motion that this be sent back to the next Finance Committee meeting for some further discussion and further information to be brought to this council.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, through the chair. Just some information to my colleagues. I have been in contact with our Parks Department Commissioner, Tim Carpenter, and there's been a lot of misinformation out there, especially in the media. With this grant, I don't know if you remember when they were here before us last week, there will be multiple meetings, just like there has been in the past with other parks in the city. So if what we do in sending this back to Finance, we will lose this grant. There is a deadline to receive it, I believe, by the end of the month, and that's why it's on the, it was on the agenda. So I would like to go ahead and vote on this tonight, and I hope I have the support of our colleagues, because we will lose the grant, and I don't know, I don't think the state will take us seriously.
Council Farrell.
I'll defer to the senior member.
Council Monahan.
I'd just like to say that, as we did do the same exact grant with James Edgar Park, the same process will be followed. Any change that need to be made to this, the park will be talked with the neighborhoods, it will have numerous meetings, and they finally end, the neighborhood will decide what is going to be in their park, what they want, so. And it does have a deadline, so I think we should just move forward on this tonight. Thank you.
Council Farrell.
Mr. President and colleagues, I reread this grant, and I know that some of you accuse me of being a stickler for detail. However, first I call Melissa Cryon at 617-626-11171. She is the administrator of park grants for the Commonwealth. She indicated, I explained to her that the council had met, and that we had voted favorably, but some other questions came up. And I asked specifically, is there a problem if we go past the December 31st deadline? And she said, that isn't a problem. If the person here in the city, who is the grant manager, sends her an email indicating that the council needs a little additional time, not longer than January, to go over some items, that that would not be a problem, that we would not compromise our standing. Otherwise, I assure you, I would not offer these remarks. that the council needs a little additional time, not longer than January, to go over some items, that that would not be a problem, that we would not compromise our standing. Otherwise, I assure you, I would not offer these remarks. The other thing I noticed is that in the grant application, there's a question 10, are fees currently charged or proposed? If yes, attach a copy of the system. It also says that if you charge fees, residents and non-residents have to pay the same, and it's checked off, no. Are we really going to completely reconstruct a park and not charge for permit fees?
Counsel, that, right now, we have a motion on the floor about sending it back to finance. That wouldn't be on the motion, that, so.
Well, I'm trying to substantiate why I think this question should be thoroughly vetted in finance. So I'm supporting the motion. The other thing is that if you accept the park grants, as Counsel Monahan probably knows, you have to open up the park to non-residents. So you're going to have groups coming in from outside the city. And again, I think we need some maintenance fees, other than just have the city pick up that tab. So the last comment I would make is there's a fairly substantial diagram in here of what was anticipated to be the park, and based on the hard work of Counsel Azak, and I might add Mr. Jacob Taggart and Ms. Deb Garland, who contacted residents, this is going to completely change. And I don't think we're being unreasonable, saying to the administration, show us the letter that you're sending in amending this grant in conformity with Counsel Azak, and give us some idea of what it's going to look like. I mean, this is a major project. And for that reason, I don't think that we're being irresponsible by saying, let's not rush this, let's do it right, particularly where the person at the state level says that we do have some latitude and the time. Thank you.
Anybody else before Counsel Monahan speaks again?
Just to.
Counsel Sullivan.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure I understood from the Ward 3 counsel. Counsel, did you say that that money has already been received by the city?
As far as, as far as when I read the article in the newspaper, I mean, you've already received the $400,000. It's already been granted. It's already been granted.
No, I believe the money's not in.
That's, okay. Counselor.
Counsel Azak.
Through the chair. So, and some information, yes, how it works with the grants is the state has already approved the grant. And then Tim Carpenter did go down, I believe it's either Taunton, Rainham, somewhere, and did receive the check, as well as some other municipalities that received some of these grants. And we need to vote on this to accept the grant. I honestly feel like this is being really taken totally out of proportion. This is a park grant. It's for, to redo our parks. This is what we're voting on, is to accept the funds. There will, there has been community meetings from day one, from back in July, about this, and there will continue to be meetings. But none of these are, I mean, that we've done this before, and if we lose this from experience, we will not get any other grants from the state.
Questions on sending it back to finance. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion loses. Question is now on, question is on the amendment from last week. All those in favor of the amendment?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. President, can you read the amendment, please?
Mr. Clerk, do you have the amendment?
The amendment is, there will be no adult-sized soccer field at Walker Playground, signed by Counsel Azak.
Can I hear the amendment?
Yes, please.
So the question is on the amendment. All those in favor? All those opposed? The amendment is approved. Question is now on adoption, questions on adoption as amended by roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor.
Can I just ask for some clarification? If a check has already been picked up, how can we actually legally submit an amendment for a contract that's already been executed?
The money constitute.
Excuse me, Counsel, you don't have the floor.
Sorry, sorry.
Counsel.
All right.
I don't have any paperwork that's telling us that money has been in, Counsel. There's an order in front of us.
She just said it.
What I'm saying is that we are voting on an amendment.
We voted on the amendment.
A contract that's already been executed, how can we even amend a contract?
I don't have any paperwork telling us that this contract has been executed. The enterprise doesn't carry full legal weight in this room. Question is on adoption by roll call vote.
Can we ask our legal counselor, I mean, counsel for some recommendation on this particular thing, whether or not it could be done, or can't be done? Since the check has already been collected, according to the counselor from Ward 7.
No, I said, we received the grant. We, the grant, we were granted the grant. I don't know anything about a check.
Giving the grant doesn't mean the money has been transferred.
You need to rein him to pick up the check.
Supposedly, the Parks Commissioner, the Parks Commissioner, or the Parks Superintendent has gone to a place to pick up.
Accept the grant.
I don't believe that's how a check, a check wouldn't be handed over like that, Counsel.
What I'm saying, Mr. President, so if a contract has been executed, to a point where we actually have documentation of the contract, how can this body actually amend that contract? That's, that's what my question is.
You're not amending the contract, you're making a condition of the grant, and the contract administrator would have to go back to the state and say, we would like to change this. And as far as receiving the money, what you're doing is authorizing the expenditure of the money.
Yes, but what I'm saying is that if an agreement has already been established between the city and the Commonwealth, we are now amending orders from what was submitted to us in the beginning. Now we're saying to that same body, now you've got to go back and rehash this with the Commonwealth. I don't think we can actually do that, since it's already been, there's an agreement in place between the Commonwealth and the city, prior to even us coming to.
There is no agreement until we accept it.
Yeah, but why are we amending an agreement that we can't do anything about anyways to begin with? That's my question.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
It's up to the council if they decide to put a condition on the acceptance of the grant. Then it would be up to the administration to, the state on that issue. And if they can't, they'll come back and say, we can't do that.
Mr. President, and I believe that's exactly what we did. We put the amendment that there will, the condition that there will be no adult-sized soccer field at Walker's Playground. That was, that's what the residents there wanted, that's what we did. Our mayor was here, he stated the same thing. So that was the condition in the amendment. So right now, I mean, I believe that all we're voting on is to receive the funds.
Mr. President, no one in this body wants a park built in this city or remodeled more than I do. But I just want to make sure we're doing this the right way. Because if the Commonwealth put out a grant proposal, and we said we're going to build soccer fields in this particular location, now we're saying we're not going to build the soccer field in this particular location, based on the amendment that we're submitting. How can we, in the eyes of the Commonwealth, justify the fact that we're taking this money that they're thinking is going towards soccer fields, that we're no longer building a soccer field?
Counsel, by that amendment, once this is accepted, the grant writer will go back to the state. The state may say, we don't agree to that, and we still may lose this money. The grant, we don't have this money. We're, we're voting to accept a grant. The state may then say, your amendment has changed what we've decided, we won't give you the grant. Counsel Lally.
If I, if I might, I believe that what we're, what we're looking for is the, that what we sent to the state when we applied for the grant was not, in both the state and the city, you know, it's, it's agreed upon, that was not the final proposal. That's why we still have meetings with, if it were, if it were final, if that's what the park is going to look like, we wouldn't have meetings with residents after the money's accepted by the city council. So that, that should be, that proposal should be, you know, the state should know full well that that's not guaranteed to be the end result.
Thank you, Counsel.
And just one more thing on that. You have, part of the process is one year for design. So one year for the design is what basically we did, and you have a whole year to decide what you want there, what the residents want there, what's going to fit. We finagled James Edgar around different ways. So at the end of the day, you had the proposal put in, you still have a year to design, and that's part of the whole process. And you can decide what you want to put there, what the residents want, and that's what they're going to get. That's part of the park's grant, so, thank you.
Counsel Fowle.
You know, I apologize for belaboring this, but the issue is, based on the work that Counsel Azak has done, does anyone have any document that says that this grant application has been changed? We submitted a binding document to the Commonwealth of Mass, signed by the chief executive officer of the city, and it talked about enhanced outreach. Members of the committee spoke with representatives of city sports leagues. BRA staff went into the committee to interview different groups of minority residents who were playing sports at several parks. And they came up with a grant that indicated a youth soccer field and an adult soccer field. Now, we've extracted that adult soccer field out, because, again, the residents have spoken through their ward counselor and other people. And I'm just wanting, I just want to make sure that if we adopt this tonight, somebody doesn't come back later on and say, well, you know, you're going to have to change your order, you're going to have to rescind it, because otherwise, we're going to lose the $400,000 and back us into a corner. If the woman at the state said that we have time to look at this, and we won't lose the grant funding, I can't see the problem with being cautious. I mean, Mom didn't raise a fool. I'm not politically going to give away $400,000 that could be used for Walker Playground. But I'm also not going to commit myself to a course of action that I'm unsure of. Thank you.
This will be the last where you've spoken at once, Counselor.
Mr. President, so I don't, I believe everybody was here at the last finance meeting when the mayor stood before us and said that this will not, if, there will be no adult-sized soccer field there. We started these meetings back in July, I will state that again, they were public meetings, and from there, I went with a few members of people that had some questions regarding this grant. We went to, we have a parks commission, we have parks commissioners, and they reviewed this, they were at these meetings. I don't believe any of us are fools, but I believe that we should do this in the right process, accept the grant, and then move on with the public meetings. This is what's been done in the past. I mean, I wasn't part of the, we, none of us were part of the grant writing process. We weren't there. This is, the people that wrote this grant, that's what they do. And they're all on record stating that changes can be made. So I'm not sure what we're questioning here, why this has become such a large issue, but I believe the people in Ward 7 deserve to have some work done to the Walker's Playground. And a lot of it's public safety. It's not just getting a new park or a new, they really need to have some money put into the park to help with some of the public safety. So I hope my colleagues will support me on this, pass the grant, and I don't, just like anybody else, I don't feel anybody wants to put something in somebody's backyard that they wouldn't want in their own.
Question is on adoption as amended by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Azak.
Yes.
Burns.
Based on the controversy, no.
Beauregard.
No.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ioneary.
No.
Fowle.
No.
Lally.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
No.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Five in favor, five against.
The motion fails, and the grant is gone. Item number 22.
Order that the city council authorizes the acceptance of Mass General Act Chapter 60, Section 3A, form of bill on notice, electronic format, which would permit the city to provide the option for taxpayers to receive their bills electronically, and would govern how the city implements this option. And council, December 12, 2016, refer to standing committee on finance, that report is favorable.
But I don't believe so. Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Burns.
This is on 22, Counselor.
Yes, yes, please, yes.
Beauregard.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Fowle.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Resolve to invite representatives from Catmobile, a low-cost spa clinic currently providing services in the city, to both pet owners and feral cat colonies, to discuss further plans and opportunities to address this concern more thoroughly. And council, December 12, 2016, refer to committee on finance, that report is favorable.
Question is on adoption by hand vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Resolve is adopted.
Order that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to transfer ownership of the city-owned parcel at 19 Main Street, commonly known as First Parish Building, map 092 route 014 plot 127, that was previously declared by city council to be surplus and available for disposition to the Brockton Redevelopment Authority. And council, December 12, 2016, refer to committee on finance, that report is favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Azak.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Yes.
Cruz. Yes. Ioneary.
Yes.
Fowle.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Kennedy affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the city of Brockton require the layout and acceptance of Bernard Road from Rodney Street Eastly and Northerly, a distance of about 1,566 feet. And for that purpose, it's necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street all the way.
Refer to finance and planning.
Order that the common necessity, convenience of the inhabitants of the city of Brockton require a layout and acceptance of Bernard Circle from Bernard Road northly and eastly to Bernard Road, a distance of about 605 feet. And for that purpose, it is necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out area public street all the way.
Refer to finance and planning.
Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the city of Brockton require the layout and acceptance of Bourne Street from Winter Street northerly, a distance of about 1,737 feet. And for that purpose, it is necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street all the way.
Refer to finance and planning.
Common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the city of Brockton require the layout and acceptance of Talbot Street from Patridge Drive southerly, a distance of about 502 feet, to the southerly lines of lots 172 and 183, on the following described plan. And for that purpose, it's necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street all the way.
Refer to finance and planning.
Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the city of Brockton require the layout and acceptance of Patridge Drive from Old Ash Street westly to Emery Street, a distance of 733.
Counsel, just keep it down, please.
61 feet. And for that purpose, it's necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street all the way.
Refer to finance and planning.
Order that pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Act Chapter 44, in accordance with the city council order of October 27, 1997, Section 3, city council hereby authorizes the transfer of $18,808 from the sale of Montello Pool account to Park Department Enterprise account, Park Improvement. These funds are for the removal and refurbishing, which includes sandblasting and painting of existing wrought iron fence from Keith Park and its installation at Perkins Park.
Refer to finance.
Mr. President.
Counsel Sullivan.
If I could, on that Agenda Item Number 30, refer to finance, could I through you as the president ask that the city solicitor's office give us any and all documentation, including amendments? amendments? The Ward 7 Counsel did show me documentation tonight dated 1997, and I did speak to a former Ward 7 Counselor who was pretty sure that the money for the Montello Pool was specifically stated to be used in Ward 7, not just for parklands in the city of Brockton. So I think going into the next, the next FINCOM, I'd like any and all paperwork, including any amendments that may exist.
I will make sure that they're on that, actually, you'll be making sure of that, Counsel.
Mr. President, on that, following what my colleague just requested, actually, the balance of that account was much larger, so if we can get a rundown where that money was spent also, I'm not sure what department, if that would be the clerk's office or the law department, or who would have where the funds were spent in the past.
I believe that would be the treasurer's office. We will try to have them give an accounting of where that money has been spent since 1990.
Seven.
Actually, I believe the original, 97, I'm sorry, you're right. Counselors, any other items before we...
Just a point of parliamentary inquiry, if I could.
Counsel Fowle.
We have certain procedures that allow for an issue to be reconsidered. I would like to ask you, how can I make sure that a message is sent to the administrator of the park grants at the Commonwealth, that the council may just need a little bit more time to re-vote on this and hopefully receive an affirmative vote?
Counsel, just to let you know, I believe, Mr. Gilde, correct me if I'm wrong, a council would have until noon time Thursday to file for reconsideration, and only someone who has voted in the affirmative, correct?
Or someone could reconsider tonight.
If...
If someone made that motion, and then if they needed more time, make a motion and refer it back to Finance.
So...
So if you voted in favor of it?
Anyone can ask for reconsideration tonight, correct?
The prevailing side would be those who voted against.
So someone who voted against would like to make a motion for reconsideration. Counselor Ioneary.
If I might, Mr. President, since I was the one that asked for it to go back to Finance, I will make a motion for reconsideration tonight, and because I voted against it, so, and send it back to Finance.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for reconsideration. The question is now on reconsideration, Counsel?
Yes.
Question is on reconsideration, which we want...
Does reconsideration also mean...
On a roll call.
Yes.
You wrote, just so you know, Counselors, that you are voting on allowing reconsideration right now, correct? So your vote right now is to allow reconsideration. So if you want this to, get a chance to vote again, you want to vote yes.
He's asked.
Yes.
Burns.